I'd like you to join me in saying please Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have the roll please?
Vaughn. Sullivan.
Present.
Shower.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Plistic. Belzak.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
We have a quorum. As you may notice, on the agenda it says swearing in of Mayor for the day, Nikos Komopoulos, due to the tornado last night and the work that we were involved in today, took up a lot of our time in the afternoon and we wanted to spend some time with Nikos this afternoon, so I talked to his mother and he'll be coming and joining us for Mayor for the Day on July 19th. That's why the change. Questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature? Does anybody in the audience? Mr. Mallers?
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
Do I have to say my name and address?
Do we want to raise the microphone?
Sir, do I have to say my name and address?
Okay, good.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank Dan and his team for what they did, especially in our subdivision. We had a lot of trees down and his team was out there at one o'clock in the morning working on it. So, I know there was a lot of stuff going on and everything, but no major damage to any homes, but just a lot of trees down and these guys took care of it, so kudos to you, Dan and your team.
Thank you very much.
Pass that on. Anybody else? If not, we'll move to the approval of the minutes for June 7th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Minutes have been approved, takes us to receiving of communications. Any of the aldermen have communications for the council? There being none?
I was just gonna say, I mean, obviously, hot off the press today, lots of, I'm sure, of fellow council members, I know City Hall, the mayor, Brian, were all getting lots of communications, but by far municipal services was getting the calls. And just everyone I've spoken to, either via text, email, or in person when I was out, could not seen the praises more of municipal services and the city's response so quickly. And they were thanking me and I'm like, well, I'll pass on the thanks, but I had nothing to do with it. I go, and I'm sure the municipal services team just did what they always did. They jumped into action without even being asked. It's like an automatic reflex for them. And once again, so proud to be a Darien representative and having such great people to work with.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Takes us to the mayor's report, and before we get to item A, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the incident, the tornado last night. We went out today, early this morning, to survey the damage caused by last evening's tornado. We saw significant damage to a number of areas in Darien with emphasis on the Pinehurst and Sawmill Creek areas. Our Public Works crew were out in the early morning hours clearing and cleaning streets, and that work continued into the morning hours. We had an opportunity to talk to residents within the community who were out clearing their property and assisting their neighbors. It was really a wonderful thing to see. We were down Lakeview in the retention area, and there was a gentleman helping a homeowner, and he lived in the Idyllwild Apartments, and yet he came over to help her. This cleanup will continue tomorrow, but I would like Mr. Gombek to give us an update on where we will go the remainder of the week. Dan?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, good evening, City Council, our viewing residents at home and our residents that are here this evening. First of all, obviously, we had a storm, significant tornado that came through town yesterday, and the effects of it were rather massive. Lamont Road, telephone poles that were just basically twisted and just strewn all over the roadway like they were straws. Pieces of steel of a roof from across the street basically blocked the Woodmere entrance, and one piece of the flat metal roof was about two blocks away. In one particular case, there was a home, it looked, the winds opened it up like a dollhouse. And literally, the wall was gone, but you could see the clothes as if they were untouched, just hanging on the second floor with the walls exposed, and the bedroom right there, you can see in the bed. So, it's amazing to see what these winds can do. Regardless, we had about 10 properties with damage, home damage, structural damage. So, our building department, Don Morris Architects, went and visited all those sites today, made some preliminary assessments, and those assessments will get transferred back to their groups to reach out to structural engineers to determine if further condemnation is required or what type of repairs should be put in place. At the same time, back out with Chris, my first thoughts were, we're gonna get a new public works building. Well, that didn't happen, so. But then on the side, most of the trees, tree damage that we had was in Pinehurst, Bailey Park, Woodmere, Sawmill Creek. We don't have a solid count for you, but between the private and the public trees, it's in excess of 100, maybe 200 trees. We, as a department, are only capable of doing so much. Obviously, these trees that were coming out were 24, 32, 48-inch diameter trees. And when they pulled, when they're pulled out of the ground, they're twisted with everything else that the winds brought in. So, we reached out to DuPage, DuPage County Homeland Security. There's a group, and it's never really been activated, in Darien. It's basically a group where everyone, every municipality tries to partner up and send equipment out to their neighboring municipalities to help them. So, what the process is, is the director, administrator, mayor, may reach out to Homeland Security. We put a request in. In this case, we put a request in for box trucks with chippers. We requested 15 of them. We requested grapplers, five grapplers. Grapplers are a type of machine that basically takes the trees and untangles them and puts them into the street for the crews to be able to cut them safely. We also asked for crews with chainsaws. We also woke up Homer, Homer Tree Services last night to make sure that we were the first kids on the block to have him and his crews come out. We were fortunate enough to be able to get two crews, two full crews, out here, whatever time it was, six o'clock this morning. By nine o'clock, we had several cities, villages respond. Some of those were the county of DuPage. They responded with equipment, one, two, probably three or four pieces of equipment, six, seven men, manpower. Westmont, I believe, was coming today, this afternoon as well. Warrenville is committed, Roselle is committed, Carol Stream, I think I said Lyle. So, it's really great to have this collaboration and the contacts, to be able to reach out to these agencies and to be able to provide a service back to residents that's, you know, above and beyond which Darien has always been. So, that's kind of where we're at. Our goal is, for the next 48 hours, to keep this Homeland Security Emergency Operations Center in effect. Based on the assessment that we do tomorrow, we'll have an opportunity to see if and what else we need. Our goals right now is to take the parkway trees that are destroyed, flush them out. Any types of hangers that are within aprons, driveways, slash, private property, when I say private property, that have the opportunity to enter a right-of-way or cause further damage to a vehicle, we will evaluate it. And if there's an opportunity, we'll have our vendor, Homer Tree, remove that, remove it and secure it. We won't take it away, but we'll remove it and secure it. We also have another organization that consists of volunteers, of firemen, arborists. So, there's been a call out to them. We've had several of those people come in. They're basically, what they do is they show up at our station, they're all, they sign waivers, et cetera, et cetera, and they provide volunteer service at no charge, and they basically are cutting up, with, cutting up all the trees with chainsaws. They're all certified operators in chainsaws, so we don't have people just running around with chainsaws, if you want to say. Other than that, I think we're in rather good shape. I know one of the things this evening at our committee, we have the tree planting program. What kind of timing was that? So, with the tree planting program, and our chairman, Belzak, will further expound it later, but we requested for an additional 100 trees for this incident, which we did not anticipate. Is there any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Dan, for those areas that didn't experience really any problems, any trees out, this is our normal brush pickup week. So, obviously, we did have actually a couple of calls asking about that, and I think that's just gonna be pushed until you can get through, obviously, the storm damage. So, for those residents, we'll just leave it out there till we get there.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. For example, in Tom Belzak's ward, Joe Kenny's, Lester's, and Tom mostly too, you know, there was really no damage within those areas. In some cases, you never even would have known a storm came through last night. So, we're gonna be delayed somewhat. We'll update the schedule by Wednesday, Thursday, to see where we're at with the rest of the damage.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
I also'd like to thank our local and state leaders who called me today to offer their assistance following this event today. This was, I think I talked to everybody but Joe Biden today. I talked to and spoke to Governor Pritzker, who called, Alicia Tate, who was the Illinois Director of the Office of Emergency Management, Senator John Curran, Representative Bill Foster, Senator Tammy Duckworth, and County Board Member Julie Runnahan. Alicia Tate is Director of Office in Emergency Management. That is the office that we would work with to do damage assessment, as well as the office we would work with to get declared a disaster area. Federal disaster area requires $18 million worth of damage. I talked to Mayor Trilla, who also talked to Mayor Cunningham from Woodridge, and Mayor Cunningham, despite all the damage to Woodridge, does not feel that there is $18 million worth of damage. So, the money we may be looking at would be coming from the state, not the federal. I talked to Senator, excuse me, Representative Foster, and he really felt that he would work on our behalf to make sure that the governor and the state did something for the city of Darien as well as the village of Woodridge and the city of Naperville. So, we're looking forward to working with Alicia Tate in the future. I'd also like to let you know that we've heard from a number of local churches that have offered their services following the tornadoes. Lord of Life Lutheran Church and Fort Corners Church have been volunteering their services on behalf of our tornado victims. This afternoon, I was given an opportunity to give them a way of doing that. Members of Lord of Life will be assisting the Darien Lions Club in a food packing and food distribution program tomorrow afternoon. The Lions Club will be buying food and items that people who've been put out of their homes would need. They'll be packing that food, and they'll be taking that to a tented area where it will be distributed. And that effort is being led by Jim Jankowski, who is one of the Darien Lions Club members. So, the Lord of Life people will be working with them. And the last thing I want to offer is that, in addition to my compliments to the Public Works guys, they were wonderful. When I was out there at 6:30 this morning, driving through Lou Mallor subdivision, and it was like a war zone, and yet these guys were working the streets and pulling the thing, pulling brush back on the, you know, onto the ground. Mary joined Brian and I out there later. We walked. I just could not believe what I saw, so I want to thank the Public Works guys. But I received a call from a Mr. Kelkar of the Pinehurst subdivision, and he called and he said, "I just want you to know that our Public Works guys are the best." And a funny aside, Brian and I and Mary were walking in the retention area off of Lakeview, and that is the backyard to a lot of homes there, and there was an older woman, really nice lady, with a smile on her face, just told us how much she appreciated our Public Works workers. And she looked at Brian and I, and she goes, "And they're cute, too."
That's part of the job.
Description.
So, I, you know, and the remarkable thing, and Mary, I think, will agree, as will Brian, when we talked, stopped and talked to people, they weren't morose. They weren't, I mean, they had smiles on their face, they were active, they were working to clean the area. They were talkative, and they were extremely grateful to see people from the city out there. So, we have a very resilient community, and we have a lot of really good people who are all out there helping one another, and I think that really, they need to be commended for that. With that, I'll move to the first item that's really under the mayor's report. It's consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title II of the Darien City Code, Boards and Commissions, by amending Chapter Four, Section 242, Economic Development Committee Teams. Could I have a motion to approve that? Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman. Kenny? Questions or comments?
Terms up there, not teams.
Army?
Terms, not teams.
Terms, yeah. I'm sorry.
Doors?
Any questions? And again, this is so we can expand the EDC to include a member of the Darien Chamber of Commerce. The Darien Chamber of Commerce and the EDC have formed a closer working relationship, and we think it's to the benefit of both groups to have a representative on EDC. Mary, did you want to add something?
I just want to say, it's been a pleasure to work with the Economic Development Committee. They got off to a great start, and then with COVID, they really put the thrust of their efforts into communicating and meeting with and talking to our current businesses to make sure that they could stay in Darien, get the support of the city, get the support of the community. And I really feel like that made a tremendous difference in outreach. And I think adding a member of the Darien Chamber of Commerce is just like a natural partnership going forward. And we've already had a great working relationship, but I think to formalize it and have a seat at the table will be even, even greater. And I'm just so appreciative, too, to see the continued commitment by the existing members. I think adding Brian and Tom will be just a win-win. And I'm just very grateful to Tina Belkey for her leadership the last two years. She will be deeply missed, hard little shoes to fill, and big shoes, but little feet. But I've really enjoyed working with her and getting to know her, and she's really set a great stage for our future.
Thank you, Mary. We have a motion and a second. Have the roll, please?
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Motion's been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Woodkey and Thomas Pappas to the Economic Development Committee. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Questions or comments? None, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Five ayes, two absent.
Motion's been approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of Brian Gay as chairperson, Robert Hahn, Angelo Ambrogno, Louis Mallers, Nick Pitser, and Matthew Webberlane to the Economic Development Committee. Motion to approve. Mary, seconded by Joe Kenny. Any questions? All in favor?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Five ayes, two absent.
Could all of the new members and reappointed members come forward, please? We have a number that will not be here tonight that will find time to preach. Bring it to the fold at another date. Joanne?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Economic Development Committee according to the best of my ability.
I've done that before. One person.
Thank you very much.
Congrats, Lou.
Thanks for being here today. And I believe they have a meeting.
Hey, Lou, buddy.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congrats, Lou, again.
And Tina?
Really?
I'd like to say, I know Mary thanked you for your role. Two years ago, we developed this committee. We went looking for a chairperson. Tina volunteered her time. And, you know, she led this committee through its infancy, and she did a remarkable job with them because what they did for the city with regard to their meeting with businesses, they're going out into the community to find out how businesses were doing. We shifted attention from bringing new businesses in to maintaining businesses during COVID. And Tina's committee really worked diligently at that. And so, many thanks to you. I wish you well. I know that you will continue to serve Darien in any way. We hope we don't lose you from Darien, and we hope you stay around for a while. But thank you very much and congratulations for all your effort. Takes us to the city clerks' report. Joanne?
I have a couple of announcements. City offices will be closed on Monday, July 5th, in observance of Independence Day. The Tuesday, July 6th, Darien City Council meeting has been canceled. And the next city council meeting will be held on Monday, July 19th.
Thank you, Joanne. City administrators' report, Brian?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Department had information and questions. Any questions for Chief Thomas or for Dan Gombek? If none, then we'll move to the Treasury report. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 212204 in the amount of $679,571.88 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended June 17th in the amount of $277,405.84 for a total to be approved of $956,977.72.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments for the Treasury? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Five ayes, two absent.
The warrant's been approved. Standing committee reports. Do any of the chairman have anything for the council tonight? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police committee was, meeting was canceled this evening. Our next meeting will be on Monday, July 19th, 6:00 p.m., in the police training room.
Thank you. Anything else? Mary?
As you mentioned just a few moments ago, the next Economic Development Committee meeting will be on Thursday, July 8th, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. And since we will not be having a first meeting in July for city council, the next Administrative Finance Committee meeting will be on Monday, August 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room upstairs.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we Municipal Services Committee held their June meeting, and we approved the May minutes. Our next meeting will be on, is currently scheduled for Monday, July 26th, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. That takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. I don't believe there's anyone in the audience to ask any questions, so I'm gonna move to old business. There being none, I move to the consent agenda. And please stay with me because we changed the letters around a little bit, and if I err, please let me know. Item A, consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the Class J temporary liquor license for the Darien Lions Club. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Conica Minolta Biz Hub copiers from Impact in an amount not to exceed $15,510. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new water main service trailer from Arizona Trailer Specialists Incorporated, doing business as CNI Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed $32,140. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one water dog sprayer from Air One Equipment in an amount not to exceed $7,759. Item E? Item E is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new Skyjack electric-powered sister lift model, SJ3220, from Lift Workers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $15,475. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of 125 banners from Bannersville, USA in an amount not to exceed $13,760. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a reimbursement for a native area planting, Holly Park, to the Darien Park District in an amount not to exceed $7,445. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from National Wash Authority LLC for the pressure washing services for the city's potable water tanks at a cost not to exceed $19,900. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a storm sewer easement for the following property, 7929 Glen Lane. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new trailer-mounted high-pressure sewer cleaner from Hotjet USA model XF21240UHO in an amount not to exceed $33,245. And item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new HP-designed X1360 postscript multi-function printer from Master Graphics Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $14,318. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. And the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The consent agenda has been approved. That takes us to our new business. Under new business, we have several items. First item we have is item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal from Hispano Lawn Service Maintenance and Landscaping Company, doing business as HL Landscape, for the purchase and installation of the 50/50 Parkway Tree Program and the Parkway Tree Replacement Program in an amount not to exceed $31,145. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion. Alderman Belzak?
This time, I'd like to make a motion to amend new business line. Item A, to expand on what was already in the motion into including an additional sum of $40,000 for the planting of approximately 100 new trees as a result of last night's storm. That would bring the entire sum that we are seeking to $71,145.
Motion to approve.
I made a motion to amend. Don't we need to second that and pass that?
I need to second. Alderman Shower? And the roll?
Okay, first, we're going to vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the original motion. For the amendment, Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
The vote is five to two. And on the original motion, Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vote is five to two.
Isn't it five and then two absent?
I'm sorry. Five to, five present, five for, two absent. I'm sorry.
You said, yeah, five to two on both, and I just wanted to make sure.
No, it's absent.
Okay.
Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the services for the purchase and installation of an in-ground irrigation system for the planter beds located at 75th Street and Plainfield Road from dynamic irrigation in an amount not to exceed $79,280. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. And discussion.
I personally feel that half of this should be split with the, with DuPage County, so I'm against this.
Anyone else?
You know, we're investing a lot of money into that corridor, and if we don't take care of it by watering, you know, we're going to be throwing more money later on, so I felt it was possible for us to do it, no matter, you know, county or not.
Mary?
I know this has been talked about before within a committee, but because it is a DuPage, it's a county corridor, but we, you know, maintain it. What's the arrangement? So it's like, they just like, like lend it to us, lease it to us? What's the?
So in a governmental agreement, the council approves annually for basically landscape services, and certain things like this would be above and beyond where Dan would, the department would apply for a permit from the county, just like the landscaping, that was above and beyond our intergovernmental agreement.
And also just to expand on it, the lights up and down 75th Street, the median, the decorative lights, those are all the city of Darien's with the permission of, from the county, so.
So what does the county pay for? Anything?
County pays us.
And they don't barely plow it, so let's not even count plowing into it.
Well, the county pays us to mow the grass.
Now, are they paying us what they should be paying us? Or is it discounted what they willing to pay you?
Recently, recently, I mean, as of two years ago, they have increased the ante on a per acre basis. I pleaded with them previously where they've said no. Again, we take it to a new level. We take it to a level of where we use fertilization, you know, as much environmentally safe as possible. You know, we fertilize, we mow.
So we losing money on the deal because we're doing a lot more than they're paying for.
I'm not sure how you look at it. I'm not sure how you're losing money.
Well, they're paying you to do a certain level of work, and you're doing a level of work much above it.
But that's by, that's by the city council's choice, though.
I understand that.
Just so the public, yeah.
I understand that, but that's still something that we're paying for.
Yeah, but we don't have to do anything and just let it grow wild, so there is that opportunity.
Years, years ago, when I was first on the council, we didn't take care of the medians.
No.
I can't begin to tell you how bad they were.
I remember that.
They looked terrible. They had weeds, they had all kinds of garbage in them. I mean, our intersections now on 75th and Cass and over at Plainfield and 75th, actually look beautiful.
We get a lot of compliments on, especially when you drive when the sun sets, you know, on a westbound, on a westbound travel, it's just, you know.
Basically, an introduction to who we are as a city.
Because that beautification would never be done by the county, clearly. Based on previous history, they would just leave it, leave it to go wild. So it's Darien's choice to, because it's a reflection of our community.
Correct.
Well, Dan, I think, I mean, we're saying go wild, but they would cut it, but not as often. They might cut it every three weeks, and we cut it every week.
It'd be like a state right-of-way, probably the best way to compare it to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of you, Mr. Mayor, 10, 11 years ago, what was happening, and Dan said this, there were so many weeds that was up and down 75th Street. We would get complaints all day long about it, how ugly it looks, and blah, blah, blah. And then we would have discussions about the fact that we're spending money when basically the county should turn around and take care of it, and they weren't going to do it. In the end, it's one of those situations that we, it's our, it's our home, we got to take care of it, and that's how I look at it. So we're, I think we're chasing good money after good on this.
So maybe what we should do is start plowing those roads and get the county to pay us to plow them, since they can't do a good job either.
I want to be careful with that, with the manpower and the equipment, so.
I understand, but I mean, that's where we're getting to, just because the county can't frankly do their job of any of these things. We have to pick up the burden. And I'm just getting tired of picking up the burden for a county that's getting a huge amount of, a tax revenue and not spending it back and putting it back into the community. I would be real careful, Eric, about what you say. We, we work hard to develop a good working relationship with the county. Then they need to start plowing the streets and doing their work. I'm going to call the question. Joanne?
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
No.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay, and two absent.
Motion is approved. Item C, under new business, consideration of a motion to approve authorizing a $15,000 expenditure for essential materials and services to supply and transition the irrigation system for the planter beds located at 75th Street and Plainfield Road to the city's water system. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. And again, discussion. There's none? The roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
No.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay, and two absent.
Item is approved. Takes us to item D, consideration of a motion to approve the expenditure of budgeted funds, line item 01-40-4325, consulting professional services for a one-year law enforcement policy manual update subscription from Lexipol LLC in the amount of $8,819. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any discussion? None, the roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Takes us to questions and comments and announcements. Do any of the aldermen have anything they'd like to share with the council? Mary?
I mentioned this at the last meeting, but this will be the final meeting before the event is over. The Hinsdale South Booster Club is still doing a eco-clean, environmentally-friendly trash can cleaning fundraiser. You can still sign up. It'll be done the day of or day after your trash is picked up. They do do recycling bins. The, it's quick and it's convenient, and the results are really exciting and magnificent. I know I'm talking about trash cans, but it makes a huge difference, and it is environmentally friendly. You can go to the Hinsdale South Booster website to get more information about this program. It's through the end of June.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, this Thursday, the Darien Park District is sponsoring their summer movies in the park at Ridgewood Park, Ridgewood Park in the Farmingdale Ridge subdivision at 7661 Wakefield Drive, and that movie will start at dusk.
Thank you. Anyone else? I had one thing I wanted to mention. I'm sorry, Tom?
I was just going to mention that the Independence Per Day Parade will be going forward. It is on Monday, July the 5th, which is the federal observance of the holiday. It'll again be sponsored by the Darien Lions Club, and the majority of the parade will go down 71st Street in the Hinsbrook subdivision.
And you still have two days to get your application and to get a unit in the parade, correct? 23rd?
I believe that's correct.
I believe it's correct, too.
As most of you know, the city of Darien got its name from Darien, Connecticut. Two weeks ago, Nick Darien came to me with an idea for our 9/11 Memorial Day. He found an article in the Hartford Current that told the story of six Darien, Connecticut residents who died in 9/11. And he thought it might be nice if we honored those people at our 9/11 event. Excuse me.
I think Joe's going to get you some water.
Very dry throat. We thought it was a good idea. So what we're going to do is we're going to have Six Flags. Thank you. Hope he puts something good in there. We're going to have Six Flags at the picnic, similar to what the Darien Lions Club have. And each flag at the base will have a story of that individual who died in 9/11. The, I thought it was, I think it's a nice program. I think it's nice that we're doing this. So I called the mayor, and she's not the mayor, she is what's called the first select man. They have what's called a select man. Your council, their select man. Name is Jamie Stevenson, and I got her secretary or her administrative assistant or her Lisa Clem, so to speak, and I explained everything, and they were extremely, extremely excited, thinking it was a wonderful honor. Jamie, Jamie Stevenson called me back Friday. I was not in the office when she called. I called her back today, and she says, "I can tell you how touched we are that you're going to honor six people that we knew and loved in your memorial, your 9/11 anniversary celebration." She says, "I personally knew two of those people." And she said, "Right after that event took place, my husband and I attended funerals for a number of those people that died in the World Trade Center." And she said, "If anything, I would love to come out, and I would love to see that event." And she says, "And I really love the fact that our sister's brother city," whatever you want to call it, "in Illinois is thinking of us for that event." And she made a point to tell me that they say Darien, not Darien. But she was extremely moved by it, and she said, "I want to stay in touch with you, and I want, I'd like to come out. If I can't come out for that event, I want to come out for an event to meet with you, to meet with your council, to see the city of Darien, because we're very proud that you took our name for your community." And I just thought that was a nice story to share. And so we may see the first select man, Jamie Stevenson, at our 9/11 celebration. Anything else? All right, motion to adjourn. Oh, we have somebody that you.
No, I was doing a motion.
Just had a hit, right?
I was going to acknowledge you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion?
Sylvia. Sylvia.
I did, Ted did, whatever.